I'm supervisor meeting. Our solicitor is going to be a little later tonight, but we're going to go ahead and get started. At this time, I'll call the board. Now, if you'd like to join the board as we stand in pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America. Interegional Republic, for which it stands. Or nation, our God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, on the roll call.
Jerry Long.
Here.
Arthur Zerbi.
Here.
David Linebaugh.
Here.
Mike Meyer.
Here.
Elizabeth McGovern. Carol Martin.
Okay, we're going to follow up the agenda, and now's our time for our public comment session. This is not the public comment session for the public hearing, which is advertised as a public hearing here tonight that's going to be later. So this is the time if you have any comments to make regarding the anything on the agenda, you can make some comments for the board. All right, let me give you four minutes. We give everyone a chance to make their comments, and then if the board, any board member wants to revisit any of the comments, we can. So, at this time, does anyone want to make a comment? Okay, that will close our public comment session. Next on our agenda is we have a guest tonight, Randy Martin. And Mike, you want to?
Certainly. This was a request for a waiver of land development for a proposed 1,560 square foot pole building. Mr. Martin was at the planning commission meeting back in the end of May where we talked about this. Mr. Martin has a trucking business on the property which he's received zoning relief for. Because of the project, the pole building itself will be used as a non-residential use, that meets the definition of land development, so that's the only reason that it's actually before you this evening. As far as stormwater is concerned, it's being proposed on existing impervious coverage, so there would be no net increase of impervious that would require stormwater management. And in review of the project, the planning commission did not feel there would be any impact as far as traffic, excessive employees, water usage or sewer use that would necessitate land development. So their recommendation was to waive the land development requirements for this particular pole building.
Mr. Martin, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I don't think so, Mr. Martin.
We have a letter from the planning commission saying that the Breckin County Planning Commission recommended approval of the waiver from the land development process under chapter 98. So, is there any discussion?
Yeah. When I first became supervisor, I'm glad we did what we did. That was a township road. We'd have, we abandoned it.
The old 97.
That was a township road, and if we wouldn't have abandoned it, you would be building on township road right now, which would really, we'd have to make changes at this point. But we abandoned it. Wasn't that many years back? That was still a township road.
Township roads, those in front of my garage, remember those buildings behind me?
Oh, well, that road into there, that blacktop.
The blacktop, yeah, it's part of my driveway. I agree, because the old bridge is actually down the woods.
Yep, yep, that was township road. Not yours, right?
I have a deed for it, yes.
Yep, definitely yours.
And some of the reasons they, we've got this recommendation to approve the waiver was it's already ravelled, so it's already impervious soil where he's building. And he's also putting a system in which does actually qualify for to alleviate some of your stormwater, so that's why it became such a minimal impact. Any thoughts, comments? Okay, is there a motion to approve the waiver?
I make a motion that we approve the waiver for Mr. Martin. I present it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve waiver. Let's see, does anybody say aye? Aye, aye. And then there is. Okay, the next item is the advertised public hearing for two proposed zoning tax amendments. And I'd like to ask the solicitor just to summarize the legal requirements of this public hearing and for the ramifications of it.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to describe the two ordinances that were advertised for enactment at tonight's meeting for the public to comment on it during the public comment period, and then we'll close the public comment period after we hear from everyone if anyone has any comments, and then the board can enact or not enact the ordinance amendments. The first ordinance amendment deals with the supplementary district regulation, section 27, entitled accessory building structures and uses, subsection G, entitled other accessory structures, to amend subsection 110, 27G4, to increase the maximum height of certain accessory structures in the AG, AG2, and FR zoning districts to 28 feet. That's the first zoning ordinance amendment. The second zoning ordinance amendment, which was advertised for the board's consideration tonight, is the amendments dealing with article 7, entitled Performance Regulation, section 40, entitled Family Farm Support Business, subsection C, entitled Conditions Number 4 and 5, regarding eight individuals employed in such a family farm support business, no more than eight persons in total shall be employed in such family farm support business. And then section 5 deals with the building footprint, amending all structures used to engage in a family farm support business activity shall not exceed 5,000 square feet, except that the building footprint may be increased when an applicant establishes that the structures will be cited on non-productive, non-tiltable agricultural soils, and does not have an adverse effect upon the existing agricultural uses of the farm. Additional storage for the business can be provided for within all the following, an enclosed attached or detached storage space not to exceed 2,500 square feet. An agricultural building that existed prior to the application for the business use can be used for storage when its interior or exterior appearance will not be altered in any way that would prevent it from any future use as an agricultural building. And three, an outdoor storage area screened from the view of any adjoining residential dwelling within 500 feet. And lastly, four, other storage is determined by the zoning board to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. So those are the two ordinance amendments. And at this point, we would just open it up for the public to provide any comment on both of those ordinance amendments before the board considers an act. For the handful.
I like this. Could you name the first one?
The first one?
Yeah.
Okay. For the accessory structures. This is amending article 6, the supplementary district regulation, section 27, entitled accessory building structures and uses, subsection G, entitled other accessory structures, to amend subsection 110, 27G4, to increase the maximum height of certain accessory structures in the AG, AG2, and FR zoning districts to 28 feet.
So is that going to be in the silverhill block?
Maximum height.
Maximum height. And what, to the current record, if somebody was proud of the AG, AG2, and FR, what's the difference? Just briefly.
The zoning map. The AG1 is pretty much the warming district. The AG2 is the light green, which is kind of a not as good ag. It's kind of quarry, it's kind of a cyclone facility type stuff. And of course, the forest tract is the dark green.
And the difference between the AG and the AG2 is the uses.
Okay. So, to the normal person, what is forest recreational? What would be a part of that? Do you need a landmark?
Mostly wooded, land, watershed area, and land.
Campgrounds.
Campgrounds. Land that you don't want, larger tract, you don't want destroyed, and I think, is it 20 acres?
For. For AG and AG and the FR.
For a home.
For some, you can go smaller for some residential.
But it is very restrictive how much you can. And it's mostly all our wooded area, back on the hills and Stone Hill, that's where you'll find your forest recreational.
And in all other zoning districts, the maximum height of the accessory structures shall not exceed 20 feet. Just to give you an idea.
There's one thing that comes into play, though, that I think, in the AG2, that's mostly up Silver Hill.
It's the pale green.
Yes. You know, were they allowed blacktop plants?
To my knowledge.
In a zoning place. Tree plants, to my knowledge, I think that's the area set aside for airport.
West side of the town.
Right. So then all of these would have to go up in front of the zoning hearing board should they want to go with a building taller than 28 feet.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And the whole use of that goes for the zoning board.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other comments or if you wanted to share concerning this? Both these proposals came before the board requesting some changes. We, this board then forwarded down to the planning commission. They actually, it's their proposal then, since they came back to the board. We then forward to Langston County Planning Commission, both proposed ordinances, and I'll just read their letter. The Langston County Planning Commission staff recommends approval of all proposed zoning ordinance tax amendments concerning the maximum allowable height of certain accessory buildings, and the condition of the family farm support, because they promote the conservation of farmland in Breckin County. So their comments went back to our planning commission, and our township planning commission then, in a letter on May 30th, Breckin County Planning Commission recommended Breckin County Board has authorized approved the proposed zoning tax amendments.
Are you going to vote some of the areas to go?
One of the five.
Well, the other session. Uh, yes.
And then if, same, our way of somebody has to, is there someone planning to do this, build something higher than 28 feet? Because you indicated that it was brought up by someone.
The township had a number of requests for variances that went before the zoning hearing board to exceed the 20 foot, and.
If you were the one chairing the house, would that, if you wanted to?
Most likely it would be. One of the, one of the reasons the Langston County Planning Commission recommended, they'd rather see us go vertical than horizontal, save farmland by going vertical instead of horizontal. Yes, I might just add that I buildings have no height restrictions. This is only for accessory buildings or some residents that's more of us. And we've had like three or four requests for variances, the height of these buildings just in the past year or two years, and they've all granted. So, this saves our residents the process of going to the zoning hearing board to get a 24-foot. Now, they're permitted up to 28 without needing the special varieties.
So, so currently, is there, there's no buildings right now at 28 feet at the current moment that are being proposed, or?
No.
So, the, is there, or would there be a notification needs by your company in which these buildings would be approved that way for that box? We can actually make sure there's a ladder truck on that box because of the simple fact of, um, normal ground ladder is not going to reach.
Well, the, the maximum height on a residential building is 35 feet.
We have 32 footers, but depending on where they're at.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, the AG, it's going to be much easier thought to, to make sure we have a ladder truck on the box, so, which is, I mean, we're fortunate enough, we have Adamstown right up the road or New Holland, so.
Again, this is the maximum height, so this would be the feet.
Okay.
The building may be 20 feet to square.
And you have that long, yeah.
I, I don't think you'll see much of it down. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll close the public comment part of the public hearing, and we'll deliberate the two proposals. I have a condition I'd like to add to the proposal related to the family farm support business based upon the recommendation from.
I'm sorry, what are you doing? I'm sorry, we understand you have a question, so I can still ask you another second.
Oh, no. Well, we can.
We were going to do separate motions on each, but if you still have questions, we'll.
Well, you can, can I do that?
Okay, well, let's go ahead and process the first one on the height of the buildings, and then we'll. What, what ordinance number will this be?
216.
So it'll be 216 dash?
2018.
2018, 216.
We move back these now.
Yep.
Well, here in another discussion, I'll make a motion that the board approves of the proposed change to the height of accessory buildings from 20-foot to 28-foot as recommended by both our planning commission and Langston County Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Okay, then, motion, who's second? Does anybody say aye? Aye, aye. Motion carries. Okay, if you'd like to make a comment on the second one.
Can you just, you have a pertinent point of the second one?
Second one? Okay. All right. No problem.
Just cut the change.
Okay, there's certain performance regulations in section 40, under family farm support business, and this specifically, this amendment addresses numbers four and five under those regulations. Four now is amended to state that no more than eight related persons, even if such persons are residents of the farm, shall be employed in such family farm support business, no more than eight persons in total shall be employed in such family farm support business. The second one deals with the building footprint of any and all structures used to engage in the family farm support business activity shall not exceed 5,000 square feet, except that the building footprint may be increased when an applicant establishes that the structures will be cited on non-productive, non-tiltable agricultural soils, and does not have an adverse effect upon the existing agricultural uses on the farm. And we dealt with additional storage, where that can be provided, within the following enclosed attached or detached storage space not to exceed 2,500 square feet. An agricultural building that existed prior to the application for the business use can be used for storage when its interior or exterior appearance will not be altered in any way that would prevent it from any future use as an agricultural building. Three, an outdoor storage area screened from the view of any adjoining residential dwelling within 500 feet. And four, other storage is determined by the zoning board to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood.
So who determines if it's on, if it's on the local? Yeah, nonsense. Is there some official person or persons that make that determination? General. Okay, thanks.
How would you monitor how many people are? This, this is a husband and wife, maybe some grown children, and they're probably small children.
They, they register each year, and currently, they're allowed up to eight, so this was not a, an increase in overall employees. The wording was changed a little bit. Currently, it was like, they're allowed eight, and only three could not live on the property. Those are the vibes, just they not allowed, could not seem to make.
I will read what Langston County Planning Commission said concerning this.
In their letter, they say Breckin County, and of course, referring to the planning commission, should be commended for ensuring through these proposed amendments that farm properties will retain their agricultural identity while also capitalizing on their potential to function as an income-producing family farm support business. And they also recommended line item four currently consists of two sentences. Langston County Planning Commission recommended that be eliminated just one sentence, and I'm just going to offer that as a proposal, but the two sentences basically said, I'll read it. No more than eight related persons, even if such persons are residents on the farm, shall be employed in such family farm support business. Second sentence, no more than eight persons in total shall be employed in family, such family farm support business. Langston County Planning Commission recommended, just break it down to one sentence, which says, no more than eight persons, either related or non-related, shall be employed in such family farm support business. Just kind of clears it up. What we were saying, two sentences, originally proposed, and I think basically saying the same thing, but I would offer that change made on the.
Who's still a family farm owner?
Yes.
Nobody who's just part of the family?
Well, the owner, the owner has to reside on the farm.
Well, the owner has to be self-employed.
What ordinance number is this?
217.
Two?
17.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt and approve ordinance number 217 dash 2018 with the change on item number four, which was eight, no more than eight persons, either related or non-related, shall be employed in the family farm support business. With that change, I'll make a motion, we approve this words again as, as recommended by our planning commission and the Langston County Planning Commission.
I second it.
Okay, then, motion, who's second? Change, who's second? Does anybody say aye? Aye, aye. Okay, you have the minutes in your packet. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes as posted?
Yes.
Okay.
On the front page, down to where it starts with, Long versus Moore.
Yeah.
Okay. I have already spoken to Carol right before the meeting. I would like to see where it said guests, or it will say guests at this point, was Long versus Moore and Bob Wanger, that it ever comes up in the future, well, who was at that meeting? Who represented this group? So it's acknowledged, should it ever come out six months, a year from now, who was here.
And currently, it's under community open session. Appears to be under community open session, but actually, they're designated guests.
Yeah, and I'll just mark it guests and add Bob's name to it.
With that change, are you prepared to?
Yep, I have read the minutes, and I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes with that, with that correction. Who's second? Does anybody say aye? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, you have a list of bills to pay for the month of June. Did you have the totals?
There's been a total change, which is I've got, which includes the truck.
Yes.
The total bills to be paid for the month of June, including the new dump truck, is I make a motion to approve the bills.
Okay, there goes a motion to approve the bills we have. Who's second? Does anybody say aye? Aye. Okay, moving on to reports. You have the roadmaster's report. Do you have anything you want to add to your report?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the roadmaster's report?
Oh, no, but I have a question. The name's Simon Chalk, he's sitting over at the farm.
Well, the 92.
92.
Yeah.
Where are you doing with that?
Uh, I don't know. I should have brought that up, but I, yeah, I don't, what the, I guess we'll probably put it out for silent bid, if that's how we did it before, I believe. So, probably end up, end up selling it.
So you're looking for direction with what to do with it?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I hadn't really thought about it, sitting here in there, I kind of forgot about some of our trips and stuff all public yet, but.
Also, it's not already ready to sell, man.
Well, it, it would take us two hours to get the stuff out what we need, and that's the normal way to dispose of.
Yeah, we advertise it and accept sealed bids for it, and we open them at a township meeting.
I guess that's the direction.
Just, it, the model year, Carol, all the good stuff on it, the Carol says she can advertise it, so it fetches a lot more than what's worth, which it ain't worked much, so. But yeah, if you get her that information, she'll have it.
Okay, we'll move on to our township engineer's report.
Okay, thank you. I have, I have my copy of my report of June 7, on page four. I have the items for board action this evening, of the items one through four. We've already approved item five. Number one would be the Millstone Village Phase One and Two. This was a new financial security recommendation letter to reestablish the remaining improvements within those subdivision phases in a letter dated May 16. That amount would be $105,355. Item number two is the Allen Hoover Stormwater Project. We issued a financial security recommendation in the amount of $1,045. We received a memorandum of understanding, and to add to that, we've also just received the stormwater management agreement from Mr. Hoover for action tonight. Item three is a financial security release recommendation of June 7 in the amount of And again, that was Scott Raver Stormwater. Item four was the John R. Zerman Land Development on Silver Hill Road. If you recall, last month, we had some discussion of releasing the remaining money provided they enter into an agreement. That inspection was done, and we are issuing a recommendation of, in the amount of $33,627.13. And again, based on the approval, the applicant that was approved last month.
Okay, is the board having any questions or comments? Dave, is board and any questions to the townness concerning the National Engineers' recommendations?
The last one's already been done.
Yep. Yeah, number five was already approved.
You mentioned that.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. That was the waiver for land development.
Yep.
You're not gonna make a motion that the board approves the action for items that the Township engineer recommended for action tonight.
I second it.
Okay, we had a motion to approve the recommendation by the Township Engineer. It was seconded, does it appear to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. You have a copy of the SEO's report. You also have zoning officers' report. And, um, Dave, do you have anything you wanna add to, um, you have some pictures here.
Yep.
The right, I can, the report, right there. Yeah. Well.
The report on there is.
Yeah, right there.
Oh.
I'm just asking if he has anything he wants to add.
To the report or to the letter?
Well, let's do the. Well, your report's pretty self-explanatory. Let's talk about the, um, the roofing. Farmhouse roofing under parking grass.
Okay. Um, yeah, based on the discussion of last month's meeting, uh, we, uh, the board had, um, approved a proposal to do the rest of the roofing. And then, uh, there was discussion about changing the scope and including the porch roof in the back. And so, uh, we met there later, and so, uh, with Mr. Martin, and also supervisor David Reimbaum. And so this is.
I said, we'll discuss the farmhouse roof under parking grass.
Okay.
Let's bring closure to your zoning. Your zoning, your zoning officer's report, and your, um, your issue with the property with extremely high grass.
All right, so you want to say that's fine?
Yes.
Okay. Well, uh, the pictures really, though they're lack of, like, aren't very good as what seen in person is. But there's, um, that property, we had, um, issued citation and asked for junk, and, uh, which, uh, was a quite an effort, was cleaned up dramatically, but now the property's in bankruptcy and foreclosure. And the owner, previous owner, has moved out, and so now the grass is probably about eight inches tall. And, uh, I'm, uh, asking the board to consider having a township mow it, just because it's a real eyesore. And, uh, I think it's becoming a health and safety issue with those tall weeds. And there's also some junk around there, so I would, uh, have the board consider whether or not to authorize a root crew to mow that. As far as the, um, forwarding the cost to the current owner, I've contacted an attorney for the, for the, uh, finance company, but they only represent the finance company. And from what I understand, because it's in bankruptcy, it just sort of puts a hold on everything. And so, I think, um, we will defer to our legal advice.
Yeah.
The council does really give us direct cert for that.
Did you issue a letter of violation to the respective, or past owners?
Yeah, yeah, we did send a letter to them, and it was returned unclaimed.
The problem is, the owner is not the bank yet. The guy that moved out still legally owns the property. Since it's in bankruptcy, you can't file a lien because it's in bankruptcy right now. So unfortunately, you could go on and mow it, but you're not gonna get the plus for the loan. So, and it'll be, if you send a violation or issue a citation, it's gonna be hard to get service on this owner. So I don't know where he is, but also because of the bankruptcy, they're gonna try to prevent anything from being filed against the owner. So unfortunately, you really are in a waiting process until the bank takes it over. Then you'll probably have some movement from the bank, but it takes months for the bankruptcy to go through, unfortunately.
The reason I ask you a question, can we, can we legally just go onto a property without the process of notifying them there of violation and then give them the sixty-two days or whatever?
Well, you would have to give them notice again, because it wasn't done for a while now. Just letting them know that if it's not taken care of, that the township plans to do so. Unfortunately, though, like I said, the township won't be able to file a lien.
I have no idea what that means.
Yeah.
So. Our Nissen's ordinance would indicate that after they're notified of a violation, within a certain number of days, we could actually go in and clean up the property and charge them our costs plus twenty-five percent on top of that.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the bankruptcy, you're not gonna get it because you can't legally charge this guy because of bankruptcy.
Are you suggesting that we just have to sit on it?
Yeah. Because I went with the township, I, unless you really feel that you, you know, it's worth the township to spend the money, you're not gonna get that money back. If you really feel that it's a danger or, you know, to other residents, I don't know.
How's it becoming, how's it becoming a hell of a hazard?
Whether it's the, the tall weeds and, and whatever, and that, like, do you have to have to otherwise, otherwise? And there's also, there's also some junk on there that, I don't know what it is. Uh, it's not an awful lot, but that in itself, uh, just gives shelter if it loses something like that.
Yes.
I would just say, I understand it's a burden to the township. But Carol may remember, go back fifteen years or so. We had a neighbor who, similar situation, because it was a horrible divorce situation. I went to bankruptcy, foreclosure, et cetera. And I don't remember how many phone calls I made to township. And, you know, Carol kinda went through the whole spiel about, you know, who's liable, blah, 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 blah. It is horrible to live next to a property like that. And the property that I'm talking about, it was at the very beginning of the height of a horrible tick season. And so people were concerned. And then what happened was, they had a large fancy in-ground pool and spa that turned into mosquito city. I mean, it just went from bad to worse. Fortunately, you know, the way our property was situated, we'd have to look at it a lot until we drove by it, even though it was next to us. But other people trying to sell their houses really had some difficulty when people came down the street and saw that. So, yeah, I understand it cost a few bucks, but for people that live here, it's really a horrible situation to have to look at that and live with it. Um, at that time, we had a lot of little kids in our neighborhood, so it became a real health concern. I don't know where this property is you're referring to, but just as an FYI, having been down that road, and there was really nothing that could be done until the, the whole process went through and there was a new owner. So.
The property's on Screw Street, that's all I'll say.
Ooh. How big is the property?
Huh?
It maybe still alive?
Oh. I have a third of an acre.
So, we're gonna go to the whole lot.
It's, it's high grass, it's junk, it's, it's. Those pictures, yeah.
Is it a residential area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, see, yeah. Home sale.
But I wanna ask the solicitor or something.
Yeah.
Is this the same home that the man came through hearing about previously, that was trying to sell his home?
Well, that's the name.
No, he was the neighbor.
So I mean, that was, okay, it's the same one.
Still for sale.
I'm just concerned about starting a precedent of going, and then how do you handle an accident that needs to be gone? You were gonna ask the question.
I remember years ago, Clay Township. A situation where a man collected, an older man, collected junk and didn't cut the weeds and stuff. And you know, that township, there were a lot of this property without being arrested for trespassing. Is that true here?
Well, when there's somebody, if, somebody was legally possessing the property and was wanting the property.
He was living there.
You gave them the notice, and he said, "I don't want you to own my property." Then you have to get a commissary extension warrant to get online. But in this situation, they have an abandoned sort of property, the guy still legally owns it, but he's not living there. So as long as you give him notice and say, you know, uh, "You're in violation, and if you don't clean it up, the township can come onto the property and mow the property and take the junk off the property, file a lien." Even though he really can't file a lien, not really warranted or allowed to, but because of the bankruptcy. You know, as long as you give him notice, and if he doesn't object, you don't hear from him, then you can go on and mow. Yeah, you got, you just gotta do the certified mail and the first-class mail, yeah. Yeah. The unfortunate situation, as Jerry mentioned, that, you know, if we do this for every property like that, you know, it should. But I understand the situation.
Can we record our time, at least make an attempt to be reimbursed for it?
You can, you can, you can do that, you know. Like I said, you can't do the lien now because of bankruptcy, once it's lifted, you can try to get that money. Uh, you can talk, we are the attorney for the finance company, you can try to reach out to them. When it's all said, sometimes the banks will cooperate and be willing, I can't see it being that expensive. You know, they might be willing to reimburse the township, as a good thing.
I'd just like to see the time recorded, kept severed, and attempted to collect, because at least, at least we'll set the precedent, and if we end up doing this, we're gonna try to get reimbursed.
Right, right.
You did do that on your house on the moon, and you did reimburse part of the financial.
So you can try, you know, even though bankruptcy doesn't.
It's a while.
You never know what the bank will do.
Well, I think, uh, we should try and get eight, uh, is, uh, is there a attempt to make, or we should have one? Well, I think so, and it kept coming back. Dave, do you know where the owner actually is living?
I think it's old town somewhere.
Okay.
I don't know, like, yeah.
Did you try to call it? Yeah, you had that. But he's.
Yeah, I called it, and then said, "It's a lot of the property, it's a hazard."
So, are they?
Uh, you want, uh, we'll have a back conversation, I lost it.
So, yeah. All right. Send the group out and all, get sure they track their time and bill for the reimbursement of their time, plus the twenty-five percent.
I don't know.
Exactly the way to go.
Should we send the letter one more time?
I would send it one more time. Yeah, just, just one more time.
You still.
Tell them it's gonna be done, yeah.
Tell them we will be, it will be, we will be attempting to collect plus the twenty-five percent.
We can talk at this note, or you wanna go with it?
Well, I think you ought to take the junk, throw it in the open trailer or garage there. There's a shed there with a door open. Just put all the junk inside, load it one, walk away. You keep track, I say, track your time.
That's after the letter.
After. After the letter.
Give that, give a short leash on that letter, you know what I mean, like, to a couple, you know what I mean?
Do you need a motion for that? Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the root crew after the zoning officer has again attempted to notify the owner. And if that fails, uh, the township say, "I'm leaving." Jump inside the building and go to the lawn.
Second.
Okay. Motion, seconded, does it appear to say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Do you have anything else, other than the farmhouse stuff? Okay. Anything?
No, I don't.
Do you have any motions to approve the reports?
Make a motion that we approve the reports of the Roadmaster Engineer, SEO, zoning, and solicitor as presented.
Okay, motion was made, seconded, does it appear to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on our agenda is the park and recreation upgrade. And we have, um, discussed a proposal from the Arc Act and a proposal from, um, farmhouse under kitchen brochure. Do you have the minutes from the parking rec, May twenty-first? Is there any discussion on that?
Uh, yeah. The survey questionnaire, or you don't know about it?
He was worried with their minutes.
On one page.
Questionnaire to be sent to the public. If you, if you just send this out to the people, and then I guess, there's no envelopes or anything, I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah, that's fine. I was looking at putting it in the, as an insert into a newsletter, um, and then they would have to either, I was gonna, yeah, or drop it off on it, I think that that's.
Is there, is there a way that the thing could be folded, that those that are sent back, that we pick up the postage, or otherwise, I don't think we're.
The problem with that is, you have to postmark everything you send out then. Like, so if you get none back, you're gonna have to pay the postage.
They have to be paid, even though they weren't used.
Yeah, if you're gonna, yeah, if you're gonna provide that for them, it's, you would have to do it on every one of them.
These people send them back, has to put a stamp on them.
The way they're proposing to do this.
Or drop them off at the office.
Yeah, then that is an option. They can do that too, and I can add that as well.
How hard would it be to add something up on our website?
Well, I can add it on the website as well.
There's no way of tracking what they put?
No. Emails they can too, yeah, and they can certainly respond by email.
I don't expect a lot of people to get an envelope, put a stamp on it, because.
I have to agree.
You know. Just so you have a figure of it.
Okay.
Because I don't even know the way this is written up. How many of the older people would even respond?
Well, I think.
Oh, you, you probably didn't see it, David.
Yeah, I saw it. I think this, I think for you and Dave, I should critique this or add any questions you want.
I agree. And then at the back part of this, where they have that you can mail it in, you know, we can add our email address, we can tell them they can, it can request us to email them the form in a fill-in format, you know, Adobe fill-in format, and then they can send it back. Might go more that way as well.
Because there's only one question or one activity on this whole thing that even pertains.
Where was it?
About, oh yeah, there, that one, number seven. Would you be interested in a community? Other than that, there is nothing on here listed that older people would be interested in.
Well, I, I think you, I think the board should, when is the park, maybe the, we have two weeks. Well, I, I think you, I think the board should, when, when is the park, maybe the, uh, we have two weeks.
It's next, next week.
Well, it's only next, next week.
Next Monday.
I mean, I can, I commend the, the Park and Rec Board for at least starting something. It does seem for those in the audience, the question just more or less seems to be, how many live in your household? Do you have any handicapped people? How many years you lived in the township? How far do you travel to the park? How often use the park? Why do you visit the park? And as the parker said, would you be interested in a community center? What's your opinion of the park? And any suggestions you have for improvement? So I, I think we can probably, um, add some line items that might be a little more specific and give you the direction.
Another question, why would we send out the request to the bodies, the nation? Do they get a response, Bonsville? I was gonna say maybe you could put it in with that, people would send them back at the same time, I don't know.
Can, you, you can speak to Bonsville, is it 30%? 40%? 50%? And 5.0 gets less.
Yeah, we get about 30%.
30%, so Cindy, your question is, it's like, they certainly don't get astonishing responses.
Is there a deep sap in this project or the whole line of Bonsville days is a hole?
Well, I know the Park and Rec Board is looking for some direction on certain things and, um, I mean, I might add, I would much suggest there should be a question, is there any interest in or desire to have lights on the fields? You know, or, there's nothing like that, so. Is there enough? Is there, is, would they, is, would you like a second screen hockey court? Is there enough basketball courts? Is there enough tennis courts? Is there appropriate number of this or that, just, just to generate some wonderful, wonderful feedback? You gotta get, get them answering stuff. So the board will review this and critique it or add any people who want to get back to Carol.
I thought of that, but it wouldn't be enough.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be small.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, but-
Yeah.
I mean, one question could be, would you like to see Bonsville days expanded and moved to the park? And really, I'm not suggesting either of ours, it's getting feedback.
Probably.
It doesn't even have to be that Bonsville days get expanded, group big a park could start activities on their own.
Sure.
Agreed.
Anyway, I can name them for a start, but I think we should, we should take it to the next level. Okay, next item, we have a proposal from the architect that started to do some work on the farmhouse. Levi, you wanna summarize where this is at this time and, and, um-
Basically, uh, they had come out and done, taken measurements of existing and they gave us a draft, uh, drawing. And I would emphasize the draft. So, um, going back to them, especially considering the draft drawing and what it did with bathrooms and this basic talk about, went back and talked to them about, you know, putting bathrooms in the, in the adjacent garage. And then I asked them for a price to, uh, print it in, for drawings, print it in clients. So at this point, he's just waiting for authorization from the board, even though I told him that, you know, he can, he can start, but he thought it'd be better to wait for proper authorization, so. I think, I said, I think it's out of the two things that the banks is. But anyway, so you see the, the proposal before you and, uh, this, uh, would be to prepare the house for assembly occupancy. And, uh, provide this with a plan for review and then, uh, with a one amount of at least permission based upon, upon their review.
Yeah, where this is coming from, uh, we had a guest last month about pathways interested in, but there was just like too much stuff that needs to be done and you informed them that at this point, it didn't look like it was, anything could be done within time and, um, so, but there were clear things that needed some architectural code review. And I think the board felt that that should be responsibility of the township, getting the building, uh, meet codes before we end up, before we entertain any other, um, possibilities that is gonna-
Basically, you know, it would be to prepare the building for community use, you know, group use. And, uh, even, even if pathway uses it, they would use it for four days, one week, three days, and next week. The building would be available, other days it would be available, uh, evenings. So it's not just for their use, it serves to be for a broader, more comprehensive approach, uh, for the use of the, uh, building. So that, uh, his proposal is for 2,000 that are in the house.
Thank you, Art.
So then, for those, and me, who understand, it could be used by the boy scouts, cub scouts, girl scouts, different groups that is grouped by the board.
That's what I discussed with this, with this group that's interested in it, that it wouldn't be exclusively for their use, and they understand that the only, um, if they would have, uh, things set up in those cases, in cases where, you know, the use is promised, but they would have to take their things down. And the amount is low enough that it doesn't require public advertising whatsoever.
That's correct. The architectural, and also that's a professional service, you're right. You're right.
Pathways started to engage this architect, work through the code process, and then we felt like, because we could not commit to them, that we needed to engage the architect and bring it up to, to find.
Is there any way that the, like, the grand dener, that you take a look at it instead of going through all the architectural or the table that I have is?
Based on the scope, you mean?
Yeah.
I, the number does not seem-
No, I mean, as far as the, you-
As far as the scope-
You're happy to review it then anyway.
Right, it includes, it includes a review in there and then a resubmission based on review comments that they received. So that, that would be one of my only comments that I would've made, you know, that they include at least one resubmission just because there's always, usually for something like this, there's always a review and then a response.
You're still answering my question. Okay, I'm gonna just cut this guy out.
I'm sorry?
Okay, okay, I'm just cut this guy out and, and you do it.
Well, that'd be a conflict of interest. We can't do, am I answering cr- I'm sorry, my ears are a little closed tonight, so I apologize. We have to serve as more of a review firm versus actually preparing the plans, so we have to still maintain that reviewing.
Well, now that you say it, it makes sense to do it, get it ready to use.
It seems like it's the only thing, otherwise we said do not, and that's not-
Yeah, it should be used, you know.
Well, there's another discussion, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve and authorize the architect to engage, or his proposal to be the script, work through it, 2,030 dollars. Okay, motion made second, the person say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have an unfinished business on the roof yet?
I, so I wanted to like explain the-
I'm sorry. Stay on focus here.
But that's fine. Uh, I think I wrote that, you know, uh, rescoping, pricing rescoping, which adds about a thousand dollars. But he submitted a total new, uh, proposal with terms and, uh, the whole prices, I think, has increased, increased a thousand dollars, which you can mind not to see, maybe less, but it's probably not good to see.
Again, originally you requested three prices and you only got one.
That's correct, that's correct. I got, um, requested three, one did not respond, one responded, I never, um, they didn't have a follow-up proposal, and then this, this, uh, not being called, uh, called.
So right now, the goal would be the 19,035 dollars.
Yeah.
I don't know, that information-
Roughly, uh, windows being roughly, uh, 55 cents.
That's for the H D A C, you mean, sir?
Windows, uh, H D A C, and, uh, they want to, this would be best to do.
Do you see the weather current?
What?
Weather current.
Uh, we're getting there. Uh, the roof, I mean, the main house roof, the main house is weather current, yeah. Some exceptions still need to be done, of course.
Yes.
There must be a little mess. Another question, Levi, that they're, they're gonna change the pitch on the, but the, yeah.
Yeah.
Does this include doing anything with the, the floor?
Uh, like, don't think so.
Did you, uh, find anybody to take care of it?
I have not, not at this point, I have not.
Outhouse at the end, uh, holding the concrete floor.
Not a tank on there?
No, it's just, it's- But the floor, the porch floor ends at the, at the outhouse, there's not much concrete, nothing like that.
So make a motion.
Make the motion to accept this proposal from Martin Group being in the amount of, uh, not 2,035 dollars.
I second.
The motion was made to accept the proposal, the board's having to, the person say aye.
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 I'm gonna make a comment.
Yes.
Our, I, this would indicate the proposal that you approved from that asking again.
Do you need, um, any action on this, uh, on these business?
They're not.
Yeah, um, I'll explain that, that, originally, uh, the attic windows were not included in the original proposal. I was just looking at the area that, uh, uh, damage control, on the inside. And, uh, really only, uh, realized later the sad shape that the four attic windows, three in the main house attic and one in the sun reflection attic, uh, the condition they're in, really, very bad and, and, uh, the condition they're in now would allow, uh, birds to, uh, the, uh, birds and the bats to air clean.
It seems to me that if you've done all the other windows, we ought to do the attic windows, have you done also? Agree?
Yeah, there was one on the board, so that wasn't done. That's still gonna stay?
That's gonna stay, it was the original parking and, um, the sashes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why?
Well, it's an original, of the original, and it's in some action, and it'll be sheltered by the porch roof.
It's not too bad shape.
And sort of a connection to the past.
Hey, do we have a motion to, like, any action on the windows? Make that motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the proposal from, uh, the, 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 the door, L C, that, all the floor windows, attic windows, in the amount of 3,280 dollars.
I second.
Motion was made second, the person say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that includes old, no, that includes Park and Rec. Okay. Okay, under old business, we have, um, the Act 537 special study plan, last month, I was given permission to meet with the, um, Old Neister County Authority. They're in the air, their board chairman, and I invited my, our township to air to join me. Basically, we asked them to study, do a study, uh, to include the proposed rezone highway commercial and also, um, bring the current Act 537 in consistent with our comprehensive plan, uh, future growth map. And so, they prepared a proposal for us to basically do that. And this is just planning, this is not digging pipes, putting anything in the ground. This is just simply evaluating potential uses in the neighborhood commercial, uh, comparing what their capacity is and what will be required to revise or, and then also to, um, that was one focus, the second focus was just be consistent with our comprehensive plan, which, uh, be showing some growth areas which were never taken into consideration in the Act 537 plan. Any questions on that? Did I say neighborhood merchant?
No, you said highway.
I, no, I said highway, highway commercial. The areas are being addressed, well, it's, it's basically making our 537- The areas are being addressed, well, it's, it's basically making our 537 consistent with our comprehensive plan. And also, part of the study is, let me just summarize a little bit, for instance, on Stone Hill Road, there's light industry that is not serviced by anything, so basically their study would say that you can do on lot sewer systems at a certain point, if they, something would actually move in there or require more than an on lot sewer system. This study would give them a path of what would have to be done if they would need more than that, and also, there's a future potential study or evaluation of long term, what would happen if, um, a package plant we have would have to be combined and sent over to the main sewer plant. Mike, you wanna add any summarization on this?
Um, you, you hit on a lot of the key points, Jerry, but the, the main reason I think we started the process was initially because of the rezoned properties that we had previously done with the highway commercial, uh, but as you said, including and looking at those areas that could be future needs areas, um, I think was, was the second phase or option of, that would be included as part of this study, uh, to address those areas, obviously industrial uses, you don't typically wanna have those as on lot alternatives, because typically they have high, a lot of higher flows, a lot of, uh, higher concentrated issues that need to be treated, uh, so on lot is not a good alternative, so just bringing that into compliance with, um, general sewage planning practices, that's, that's the reason for that, um, in addition, Fred's going to be looking at alternatives as far as the adequacy of the interceptors and pump stations that are already out there, uh, so those alternatives will all be looked at as far as how will they impact the environmental constraints in the area, uh, do they require head knot permitting to do, uh, to get where they need to go, um, and looking at different cost alternatives as well as just the physical, uh, conveyance of the lines, uh, will all be analyzed in this, in this special study, um, and that's really where you have a little bit, um, more cost involved as far as the proposal indicates the total cost of the study, that's because of the number of alternatives or options that are necessary to go through, uh, which you're gonna wanna see, because there's, there's different ways to slay that, that are, some are gonna be cheaper, some are gonna cost more, you're gonna wanna see that as far as your options available, so, um, I think this study, this proposal outlines all of those areas, uh, in addition, those two package plants that you do have, typically package plants are being phased out by DEP, they don't want private package plants being continued, they want everything connected into the public system wherever possible, uh, because they are being maintained by usually the property owner, um, and DEP does not have a lot of oversight of that, uh, as far as whether they're discharge compliant, uh, so those are just some of the things that'll be looked at in the total study.
You're seeing that package plants will be looked up, looked up to the main plant someday.
That's, that's what DEP is heading toward, almost in all cases now.
You know what that's gonna cost?
That's what would be included in the special study.
It would be a study. It would not be, uh, yeah, they would identify what that process would be if we got to that.
Right.
Drilling underneath the term quite good.
No, they have a tunnel.
Really, okay.
But, my gosh, the cost.
Well, then we know what to shy away from, right?
I thought my sewer rates were high now.
Clearly, the industry comes in, this is hard to construct, had it so far, the industry comes in, once sewage capacity is available, we don't have, they pay the price.
True, but what we're, what we're lacking right now is the Act 537 is not consistent with our regional comprehensive plan, so we don't even have the planning board, so if someone is looking, the industry is looking for a property now that currently, first I, I used the example Stone Hill Road, we don't even have any plans, there's not, the just that the 537 plan previously never included that area to identify what future businesses would require to do, um, that's where, if a business decided to come in after this plan's done, they would know, they would, they would know exactly what would be expected of them, they may end up having to send all of it over to the main treatment plant. I'm not sure how to answer that, um, again. No, it won't, yeah, at some point, this would be to bring and make it consistent with our comprehensive plan, now, in the next couple of years, you know, we'll probably look at another regional comprehensive plan, but, um, we, we kinda, the cart was ahead of the horse, you know, in our comprehensive plan, the Act 537 plan was never brought up to be, uh, consistent with that, now, back to your question, Ron, your proposal's around 24,000, now, 50% of that is reimbursable to DEP once they approve the script for work, so what happened is, if we approved and started the process, um, and I'm stealing your words.
That's okay, go ahead.
Uh, the next step would be, uh, to get DEB's approval of this scope and then once they approve it, uh, then they would, would be able to, 50%. Decide what direction you would take, you know, get, meet with DEB, get the thing on their schedule, on their approval process, and then, uh, I'd say, then they would reimburse us if you're standing, so, yes.
Is that a serious fire oil or, or did we search for a water?
Everything in the township is a lot of oil.
So, isn't there a, 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 if you have a lot more, you don't want it so big because it doesn't guarantee to be enough water available if there was an emergency or something?
Yeah, just prove the borders out. Lot sizes, currently, if you have public water, you can have smaller residential lot sizes, which we don't have public water, but, um, they would have to go through a water study and their audit and reports there. So, any other questions, session? Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal by deeper engineering to conduct a special study of the Act 537 plan company and that, um, they would certainly try to, um, get it approved through EAD, DEB is early in the process, so that we approve so it would be reimbursed.
You made that motion?
Yes.
I second it.
Yeah, I made the motion to accept the proposal in one second, does the board say aye?
Aye.
Now, we have, um, one item yet on your due business, I'm gonna call for a short executive session to discuss, uh, personnel, we have a employee that's up for his 60-day new hire evaluation because of the personnel issue, um, we're gonna, um, can we just run the shot? So, we're gonna, um, pause and do a quick, short executive summary to discuss the performance evaluation that we received from the road master, a new employee, and then we'll return and if there's any action, and then we'll, we'll do our, 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 uh, generally.
I'm pretty sure they've got a top drop that they have on you.
Okay, the fact, as I mentioned, we have a new employee that's up for his probation period, is, uh, is pending and is up for, um, if we want to continue employment, we get only a long period of D, we get an increase of, at this point, at this point, for to entertain, uh, entertain a motion for the, uh, Harold and Alp, the road girl.
I would make the motion that we keep an employee and, uh, pay him $22 an hour and start him on the 18th this month.
I second.
Okay, motion was made in second, does the board say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:32, that's what it says up there.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion was made to adjourn in second, does the board say aye?
Aye.
I can't help but shout out.